Okay, ladies and gentlemen, it's 5:30. Actually, before we begin this caucus session of council, we are going to go into a brief executive session regarding collective bargaining. So if you guys will bear with us.
I'd move that we go into executive session on personnel matters for collective bargaining.
Second?
Yes.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Cosar?
Yes.
Mr. Morve?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
Okay. We just returned from executive session. It's 5:34, and I'd like to begin this caucus session of council. I have one item for actions this evening under new business being one ordinance. Are there any recommended changes or additions to the agendas presented this evening?
I have none.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to call this November 18, 2015 council meeting to order. Would you please camp in pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Cosar?
Yes.
Mr. Morve?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Mr. Tisch?
Here.
Thank you. Okay, all of you have received one set of minutes from our regular November council meeting. Are there any revisions to those minutes?
I have none.
If not, they stand approved on record. Under reading and communications, Mr. Tisch?
I have none.
Mr. Rogers?
I have none.
Mr. Morve?
Just for the record, the house on Kirk Road, letters went out from the fire chief yesterday.
Kirk Street?
Kirk Street, I'm sorry. And that'll be a 30-day, that provides, we have to wait 30 days now, and then, once those 30 days are up and there's nobody coming forward to make corrections to that property, we can proceed with demolition. So, we're pretty excited about that, finally. Talked to the fire chief about maybe using it as a training, uh, training grounds, and because of the infestation, the proximity to other houses, and now with the new EPA restrictions, we're not going to do that. So, it's going to just be demolished and be done with, finally. So, this adds an update on Kirk Street.
Mayor? I want to make a brief comment on an article that appeared in the Warren Tribune on Friday the 13th. It was written by Guy Cavellio. He talked about how he wanted to congratulate the people that stepped up and ran for office in the Raleigh, Trumbull, and the various municipalities that are here. And he cited some very interesting things, like in Trumbull County, there were 20 state and federal seats with terms expiring. On the Republican side, there were 20, okay? There were two people that opposed those 20 seats, two people. It's either apathy, or maybe good people aren't qualified, aren't able to run. And I'm making reference to term limits, not wanting to pick a fight with Frank. It's just, we're gathering the data, we're seeing the results of what's going on here. And we haven't had an election in Cantfield where anybody opposed anybody who ran. You can hang your hat on apathy, or you can hang your hat on people that maybe wanted to run and serve, and not for the money. Trust me, it's not for the money. Weren't able to. So, I guess we have to take a long look at that, and we, council, can put that on the ballot with an ordinance, and then voters would decide. And I think we ought to start to think about that, and the deadline for doing that is December the 16th, because the primary comes in March. But you don't have to do it at the primary, you could do it at the November election. But I, for one, will go on record and say, my friend of 60 years was the moving force behind term limits. I think as engineers, we've gathered the data. I think when we analyze the situation that exists today, I think we have to take another look at term limits. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor. We don't have Joe here, so...
The only thing council needs is set a date and time and place for the public hearing. The request was for street lighting in King Lake subdivision.
Okay. Actually, before we continue, let's, uh, let's set a public hearing. Council of City of Cantfield to hold a public hearing on December 1st, 2015, at 6:00 PM at the Cantfield Municipal Building, 104 Lisbon Street, Cantfield, Ohio, 44406, for the purpose of informing residents in the King Lake subdivision regarding purpose, proposed street lighting.
What day of the week is that? Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, is that correct?
Second.
You're right.
Tuesday, Sunday, first.
That's Tuesday, correct?
First is Tuesday. Okay, under reports of committee city managers and department heads, Mr. Rogers?
I have no report.
Mr. Morve?
Just an update with the fire district. The, uh, this evening, we'll be deciding whether or not to rezone the property which the fire district will put the new station. And so if that passes, then we've got a green light to move forward and get the architect more involved now and cement the plans. And hopefully, by the end, spring, or the end of spring, we'll be breaking ground for the new station, so things are going well.
Great. Good news. Mayor, close up?
I have nothing.
Okay.
For the city manager, he received notice from Mahoning County sanitary engineer that was, uh, that they will accept the credit of the SOAR bill at 170-03, and that's in reference to the motion that was passed last meeting. So they will accept it.
Great. No further reports.
As of today, we've picked up 220 loads of leaves this year, just in the section of town that we do, that's not the section that I does. Last day of relief pickup is one leaf per day, the 25th of November. Residents should have their leaves out on Tuesday night, because once we get through on Wednesday morning, we'll be knocking the boxes off the trucks, getting set up for snow and ice. Evergreen's in the process of conducting the third street sweeping for this year, that should be done this week. And the only other thing I have, over 1,000 tons of salt have been delivered. We actually ended up, I think, with 1,250 tons. They'd outsend partial trucks, trucks all come fully loaded, so each time I placed an order, we always ended up with a little bit extra. Sometimes you end up with extra, sometimes you end up a little bit short. The trucking company they used this time, we ended up with extra, so we've got about 1,250 tons. Plus, I'm going to estimate we probably had 200 tons left from last year.
Hopefully, we'll be on the city.
Yeah.
Be around. Thanks, Paul.
For the month of November, we've only issued three permits for a total valuation of $28,200. On the bright side, Mike Pizzullo came in and talked to Joe last week about putting PUD houses across from St. Michael's Church on a lot over there. So that's a good project.
Mike? On that lot, is that going to have to be then subdivided? He's putting three houses on, across from St. Michael?
He's going to put a bunch of houses, I don't know how many, he didn't say.
Put.
It's put houses.
It's going to be PUD?
PUD, yeah.
That been through the planning commission yet, or?
No, he's just in the process of getting all these permissions.
Exploration.
Are they going to demolish the structures that's back there?
He has, I haven't talked to him, Joe just had brief conversation with him, I'm assuming.
Under persons desiring additional information from department heads, may I ask that you step forward to the podium, state your name and address clearly, for the record, and keep your questions to three minimum, three minutes maximum per person, no more than 30 minutes total. Your questions must only pertain to each department head's report this evening. Okay, thank you. Under recognition of persons desiring to speak before council, may I ask that you step forward to the podium, state your name and address clearly, for the record, and keep your comments brief. Joe LaCicero.
Joe LaCicero, 60, white, old court. I wanted to make a few comments about the questionnaire that is out there, and also want to introduce two students, high achievers academically and also athletically, Jake and Dave. Please stand. Jake Isarko?
Isarko.
Isarko. Is there an S in there? Yeah. And Dave Hawes. They both wrestle. They look like wrestlers. And they're serious, because our first meeting last night, they refused pastry and sugar drinks. They said it was not in their regimen. And I wanted to officially introduce these gentlemen to the council and staff. We really appreciate you guys joining with us in this very important initiative. And I know you have to get, if you have to go to bed early, we understand. Or you're welcome to stay, see how the government runs. Thank you.
Joe, did you mention that they're National Honor Society members?
Academic achievers is my way of saying it, but they are members of the National Society. I think the projects associated, is your project associated with that? I think you told me that, right? And so it's a win-win, you know, where I love brain power and muscle if I need it, hoping I don't need the muscle. But I do, you guys know, I really do appreciate your effort. I think I need to explain, I like when, John, you quote things, so I'm going to pick up on them. This is from a guy named John Adams, I think he's the beer guy. He says, "Liberty cannot be preserved without a general knowledge among the people." And that's, that's an inspiring statement for me. I've read it before the questionnaire, and I thought about the questionnaire. And the second one is if we are, this is Thomas Jefferson, he didn't, he doesn't have any beer companies, but he's supposedly the smart guy. He says, "If we are to guard against ignorance and remain free, it is a responsibility of every American to be informed." And maybe that sounds too dramatic, but I think it's, you know, you can see what's going on in our country right now, and the difficulty we have when the populace is uninformed. So, one of the inspirations for this effort was to also inform people, you know? Maybe they're unaware of these questions that are in front of us. Maybe some people were unaware of the fact that you are going to have to allocate scarcer resources next year, right? We deliberately changed it from a survey to a questionnaire, because a survey is random, right? And a survey is anonymous. And when I, when we thought about that, we said, that's not what we want. We want people to have an opportunity to speak to you as if they were here. These meetings are not well-attended, you know, for lots of reasons. This is, our group felt, an opportunity to give people a voice. And what we put in here are things that we think they care about, right? It opens up with a, uh, a report on outsider looking at Cantfield, if you've had a chance to scan the questionnaire, how other people view us as a city, and it's high marks all the way, all the way down. But what people inside Cantfield think about Cantfield is more important than what outsiders think. So this is an opportunity for me to say, okay, they, Area 5 says art crime, property crime, 65% lower than Ohio average, 60% lower than the national average, violent crimes 90% lower than Ohio, and 92% lower than the national average. They gave us an A+. You know, and I think that people ought to know that. Maybe they do, maybe they don't. And there's other things in here. I think the worst grade we got, I mentioned before, was the weather. They gave us a D+. But they're not seeing these beautiful leaves that we have, right? The other, so we call it a questionnaire, because it's not anonymous. In fact, I am wrestling with whether or not I even look at someone who turns in a questionnaire and doesn't have the wherewithal to say, hey, I believe this, this is my name, this is where I live. The jury's out on that, you know? We're going to read them all, but I'm not so sure that that's what we're looking for. We're looking for a citizen who's stepping up and taking the responsibility to say, this is what I think, and I want you to know this. John Doe, here's where I live. This is what I think my neighborhood is. So I wanted to clarify the difference between a survey and a questionnaire, because it's not a survey, it's a questionnaire.
Joe, I commend you, this is a great, this is a great thing you're doing, and guys, thanks for your help with this. I think any way that we can learn how to engage the people of Cantfield, because that's been one of the frustrations with, with me sitting here. I can go out and I can talk to people, I can get their opinion, but it doesn't seem like we care. It just doesn't seem like people in Cantfield really, really are concerned with things that are going on here, the decisions that we're making. Except when it comes to, then we were going to have to raise taxes to support all the things that we do here, and then you find out that, yeah, Brenda was talking to her hairdresser, and her hairdresser said, well, we don't need that, because, well, her hairdresser was never here. So where are they learning this? I mean, where does this information come from? So anything we can do, anything you learn, that we can engage the population of Cantfield and get their input would be helpful, too. Whether it's, you know, you come back to us and say, well, social media, I know that, you know, X, Y, and Z generations love that, but my generation may not, you know? And if you can come up with some of those ideas, too, you know, how do we engage and have this conversation with the citizens?
I think that's a great agenda item, for, you know, to figure out how many different ways, because we do have generational differences, right?
Yeah.
And how people are used to be communicated with. I think that would be a great effort, and to increase the cycle time, once a year, it's got to be more frequent, it's got to be more current. Feedback is most valuable when it's close to when it happens, right?
Yeah.
And I think that might be one of the ways we spend our intellectual capital, is to think about how to increase the knowledge for our citizens, because these two guys warned what happens when they don't know. If they don't understand how this city works, somebody's going to put information out there, and they're going to change it all with this much information. That's dangerous for us, I think. And we have to figure out how to get truthful information out there, because there are some people who spread information that is not truthful. They have an agenda, you know, they're playing chess. I'm lousy at that. I think we've got to push the truth, push the truth, and I think the people in Cantfield are spectacular people, and if they know the truth, they'll make the right decisions. Not to say you're ever going to come here and say, tax me more. I don't think, I might be wrong, that's not one of the things I think they're going to say yes to, but I think they'd be very willing to be engaged. Maybe they'll plant some tulips for us, if you say we mean it, if you really want those. We don't, I think we need to look at, you know, get outside of the box and look at different ways to join with the community and doing some of the things you feel like you're responsible for. You're responsible for a lot of stuff, but you're not responsible for everything. Citizens have a role to play. And I think, I'm for one, I'm spoiled at Cantfield. I sat back and, you guys, you know, now it's not so easy.
Joe, one of the, one of the agendas of Andy Scibola was to educate the students. He was adamant about that, and he is so right. And if we could take that message and somehow get that to the schools, too, you know, hey, why not teach these young kids in school how this, how our local government works? Because I'm civic, we have Civic Day here, and I asked them, anybody know how the mayor got here? They had no idea, they thought he was riding on a sleigh or whatever, you know? Yeah, they didn't know. Yeah, sure. And so I think if we can take that, too, and somehow incorporate this and get that to the schools, you know, and so with our students start learning about government, I think it's, I think that would be powerful.
And John, we have two ambas, bring it back.
And that's a message, we have the conduit right here to take that message to the school and drive it home.
We have two ambassadors here that speak student language, right?
Yeah, but it's a great thing that you do.
Thank you for listening.
Thanks, Joe.
Thanks, Joe.
Frank McKeon?
Good evening, I'm Frank McKeon, reside at 220 Bendoo. At church last Sunday, my wife picked up a questionnaire in regard to Cantfield. As I read the cover letter, the main issues and objectives appear to be, pay close attention to these. Number one, loss of general revenue funds. Number two, provide data to plan for 2016 expenditures. Number three, learn what services are most valued. And number four, plan for the desired future, which I presume will come from the questionnaire's data. In reading further, I've come to question number 18. Let me read that. Recently enacted city law limits the number of consecutive terms permitted for a city council member and for a mayor of two terms. Since the change, no candidate for either office has had any opposition. Do you believe that term limits for city council and mayor has encouraged people to participate in the city government? Yes or no? Now, looking at, we have a political agenda, insidiously inserted into the questionnaire, that is terminus. Full disclosure, I sponsored the terminus change. It was approved by the voters, in spite of being vigorously opposed by city council. Now, what does question 18 have to do with the main points of the survey, which I just enumerated? Is loss of revenue due to terminus? What do terminus have to do with planning for the 2016 expenditures? What do terminus have to do with limiting which services are most valued? How do terminus affect planning for the desired future of this data? The question attempts to relate lack of candidates to terminus. It is true, we have had a lack. What evidence is there that terminus are the cause? Did this committee look back several years? I believe you will find no candidates at times before the ordinance, but this will not fit their agenda. In many of the questions, responses were solicited. Why was there no response solicited for question 18? It would not fit the political agenda buried in the question. If the committee were sincere about this issue, a better question would be, and I quote, "Would you ever be interested in running and serving as a councilperson and/or one of the boards and commissions?" End quote. Yes or no? And then ask for responses. But that question does not fit well in the, in the insinuations in question 18. Let me further mention an ordinance limiting terms of boards and commissions. Why didn't that get a question? It probably did not fit well with the ideology being included in the question. In addition, question 19 is also politically motivated and probably directed at my recent attempt to elect a city manager. To conclude, questions 18, questions 18 and 19 do not belong in this questionnaire. Regarding question 18, I suspect that committee members cannot accept the will of the people. These questions are dishonest, biased, misleading, and irrelevant to the aim of the questionnaire. I question the sincerity and motivation of this committee. I will not participate. Thank you.
Well, I wish you all a happy Thanksgiving, may you enjoy the company of your friends and...
Just for the record, we are not on the committee. This was a initial that, hey, we're going to...
I understand that, there are names listed, I see who's...
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear that, you know, it's not our, it's not our service, it's this committee's survey.
Again, I guess my point was, political aspects do not belong in this survey.
May I respond?
Sure.
Thank you.
You have to come back up. You have to tell that gentleman.
Okay.
You have to come back up and state your name and address.
I just have short notes. Well, what's this for? Sixty-one. Fred, thank you for taking the time to look through that questionnaire. And I think your points, I would agree with all your points, except your conclusion that it's dishonest. That I disagree with, okay? Because I pride myself in being as honest as I can be, recognizing only God knows the truth, you have your truth, I have mine, okay? Those were legitimate. Those were legitimate comments. But I want to state for the record, that I asked Frank if he would join our group, and I think Frank, being an honest man, you would agree that I asked you?
I agree.
And you refused. And see, I think the biggest difference between our group and your group is we're trying to make a positive contribution to this city. I am not sure what your motivations are. I'm telling you what ours are, I'm not sure what yours are. But I do appreciate the comments you made, I think they're legitimate, and I think we'd get a, we'd probably be damed on some of those questions, because they were kind of leading. You're right about that. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
You have a good comment.
He has to come back up.
Yes.
This is the last, this is the last time. I'm Frank McKeon, 220 Bendoo. I agree that the intent is admirable, that have a good intent. I think it was, I have no issue whatsoever with Joe. I do think that those questions poison the questionnaire.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Barbara Fisher?
My name's Barbara Fisher, I live at 31 Lakeview Circle. But I mean, I think you should be careful what you wish for. When you talk about people in Cantfield being apathetic to politics. After 52 years of living here, I'm still an outsider, but my husband and my children aren't. They were born great, so be careful what you wish for.
Well, if I may?
Sir Lord.
I was just talking about this writer writing this article, and I wasn't expressing my views at all.
You're expressing my views, I think you're right. I'm not here to talk about that, I'm here to talk about 33 Kirk Street. I'm really glad the letter finally went out. There was a roofing company there, they put it yesterday. They didn't go up on the roof. They told my daughter that they didn't think they wanted to go up on the roof.
Well, they've fallen through.
It's fallen through, because the ceiling in the bedrooms are down now.
It is, it's done.
So I certainly hope that if they try to send someone in to come in to put a roof on that thing, nobody's going to give it to them. I'm here just to say, you know, we're still here, and we're still waiting to get that house done. But more than that, it just, it seems to me that the biggest problem we have is the process.
Yes.
And I guess I'm here to volunteer, if I can be of any assistance. I think that if we looked at the process and looked at ways that we could shorten it or tighten it, that process being people not taking care of... it or tighten it, that process being people not taking care of houses or deserving houses or houses that go into foreclosure and you have a company in Florida who owns it, which is our situation, I guess. But it seems to me that there's some, there must be a firmer and better way to deal with that. We've talked to some people in Campbell who I think spent a lot of time working out a better way to try to get houses that should be demolished down. And I'm hoping that someone's willing to look into that.
In Campbell, they can do those things. The reality is, is if myself or, or even yourself, maybe you had a hardship and couldn't take care of your property, you wouldn't want us coming in and just demolishing your property.
No, no.
You have rights, and so that's what we're trying to respect. We're trying to follow that process, and believe me, I'm in private business, and I can get done like that today. And but when it comes to government, I found out that it's a, it's a snail's crawl.
Yeah, I, and I'm really not telling you many people who have problems with their houses. I, you know, you can, I would rather form a group of volunteers to go fix the house at that point.
Yeah.
But you have banks or companies that have bought these properties, and they buy them and they sell them, and it, and you go years trying to nail those people down, and they're, it seems to me we need to find some way to tighten that up.
Unfortunately, unfortunately, we have to follow that same process, though, that we do if it was an individual, so that we protect the rights of people. And...
People who live next door have rights, too.
Oh, I know that. And trust me, I've been talking to the chief, to Joe, there is nobody that wants that place down more than I do.
I know Mr. Murphy, and we like to not talk to you, you know, about so much. I don't blame him.
But I talked, in fact, I talked to the chief today, and because yesterday he said he had a letter, it was gonna go out. I called him today, and I said, did that letter go out? He said, yes. So give us thirty days.
I thank you.
Bart, one time, actually, I mean, I'm gonna say, you know, I'm gonna say, you know, it's about, I mean, the real thing is, my avenue of trying to get these houses, houses bought, by people who want to buy the homes takes forever, just for people that have the money and want to buy these homes. And so that process takes a long period of time, a long time to demolish a house. So John's right, the process takes long to begin with, and then it's expensive further we do want to demolish it. So it, it's just never-ending. I go through this every day trying to get these homes, and it's just, the situation just takes so much time, and it's so frustrating for us. So understand, it's just that we're having our people, it's just a simple process.
I do understand that, and I, you know, it's frustrating for us, too.
I know, I appreciate you, you do. We're trying hard.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bart.
Thanks, Bart.
Okay, under old business, there is none.
Mr. President.
There is none.
Yes.
Sorry.
This one there.
If I did, Mr. President.
Under old business, there is an ordinance, amending ordinance, amending ordinance 1973-44, rezoning lot 2969 on Herbert Road from M-1 Manufacturing District to S District.
What do you think, Frank?
I think we are.
Yes.
So you just read it.
So as per the provisions of section 4.05 of the Charter of City of Campfield, I move the council to discuss the requirement of two readings of the proposed ordinance and authorize adoption of the sale upon its first reading.
Mr. President, we read this at first reading. We just need to have, conduct a second reading tonight, because it was read at first reading at our last council meeting.
Okay.
I believe I read it at first reading. Mr. President, I have, but you may want to read it by title only.
Don't we read it by title only?
Well...
As per the provisions of section 4.05 of the Charter of City of Campfield, I move the council to discuss the requirement of a full reading of the proposed ordinance and authorized reading by title only.
Second.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Coatsar?
Yes.
Mr. Morve?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
And Mr. Tisch?
Yes. Mr. President, I have an ordinance approving the repla, excuse me, an ordinance, amending ordinance 1973-44, rezoning lot number 2969 on Herbert Road from M-1 Manufacturing District to S Special District. I move for passing.
Second. Second, Mayor. Discussion?
I think most people that are in attendance are probably aware that this replat is, to replat land on Herbert Road from a manufacturing zone to the special district zone, which the special district would allow the construction of a fire station on that property.
Any public comments? Will the court please call rule?
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Coatsar?
Yes.
Mr. Morve?
Because I am on the fire district, I'm going to abstain at this time.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
And Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
Thank you.
And that's 2015-36.
Thank you. Okay, under new business, item A. As per the provisions of section 4.05 of the Charter of City of Campfield, I move the council to discuss the requirement of two readings of the proposed ordinance and authorized adoption of the sale upon its first reading. Second. Second. Steve, would you like to read?
I don't think so, but you have the other one.
Okay. Will the court?
No, yet. Get a call roll one. Get a call roll. Call roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Coatsar?
Yes.
Mr. Morve?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes. Okay. Mr. President, I have an ordinance...
We have to read it by title, we have to do title only.
I knew, I knew we didn't have all the... As per the provisions of section 4.05 of the Charter of City of Campfield, I move the council to discuss the requirement of a full reading of the proposed ordinance and authorized reading by title only. Second. Second, Mayor. Discussion? Will the court?
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Coatsar?
Yes.
Mr. Morve?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
And Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
Mr. President, I have an ordinance approving the replat of Campfield City Lot Number 2969, Herbert Road, by the Cardinal Joint Fire District. I move for passage of this ordinance.
Second. Second, Mr. Tisch. Discussion? Public comments? Court, please call the court.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Coatsar?
Yes.
Mr. Morve?
Abstain.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
And Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
And the number is?
2015-37.
Thank you. Councilman's comments. Mr. Tisch?
Um, the comments will be somewhat brief. We had our first budget meeting the other afternoon, what day was that?
Monday.
I think that those of us that attended have found out that it's gonna be an interesting year in putting together a budget overall. Although we will end the year in the surplus in our general fund, our projections with rate increases for hospitalization and those kinds of things are going to tax the general fund in such a fashion that we will virtually deplete that with next year's budget as it stands right now. And so we need to take a look at ways in which we can conserve funds, things that we can and cannot do, and that collectively, we as council probably need to approve the items that we're not going to be doing in the 2016 budget and make that known to the public, so they're well aware that upfront. I mean, we have had some discussions about what those items are, but I think it's premature to announce anything because obviously things can change over the next two months. But we do have a work cut out for us, and I would suggest that we have another preliminary budget meeting prior to year-end. I think the finance director's gonna work on some bare bones budget numbers, so we can actually see the numbers, and we talk in general terms of what those numbers were, but not necessarily seeing them all laid out doesn't give us necessarily all the details that we need.
Thank you.
I echo Mr. Tisch, too, also, I think we should do that for sure this year, no questions. It's gonna be a tough year for us next year. I do, I wanna, I wanna make also, I commend Joe again for your, your work, and the students, too. I appreciate that. I think all the questions were outstanding. I think you did a good job, you can be on the head, I think it's gonna work, and I wish I was here to see it work, but I guess I'll come back and see how it's working, too. So I'll come back for sure, but I wish you luck. I think it's gonna be great, and I commend you again for all your work. Good job. Thank you.
I just wanted to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and I'll tell a little Thanksgiving joke for this occasion, so...
Scary.
So anyway, this turkey goes and, he's gonna try out for this football team, and the coach is standing there, and he goes, oh, yeah, turkey? He goes, just give me a chance, just give me a chance, coach. And so he says, all right, get in there and run down the field, he says, quarterback's gonna throw you a pass, you know, so turkey goes running down the field, the quarterback throws a pass, and turkey catches it, and he did this like ten or twelve times, like right on the money. So the coach says, hey, he says, let's talk about compensation. And the turkey says, no, no, you don't understand. He goes, I just wanna know if the season's gonna go beyond Thanksgiving. Very good, Mr. Rogers. Happy Thanksgiving. Very good.
Chuck, thank you for the way you bring things into focus, the vast experience that you have, and the way you are attempting to train your new mayor, and you're doing a nice job, but I just love the way you summarize things, and it's, man's worth his weight in gold. I think we had a great session here today. We were talking openly, nobody got mad. There were comments made that probably weren't pleasing to the listener, but I would love to have fifty people in this room and talking amongst ourselves like this. This is what we want to hear. What's important, what, where do you want to go, folks? How do you want to get there? I think this was a good session. That's all I have. Happy Thanksgiving.
I just have a few comments, nothing necessarily to the meeting today, for really, but more of a, I guess, overall seasonal thing, but, you know, I... Campfield, we were talking earlier about need to inform the people of Campfield and different things that are coming in front of the citizens of Campfield, and we were talking about surveys and all this different kind of thing, and, you know, we, we really are trying to make Campfield... The reason, the reason why everybody comes here and lives in Campfield is because I think we have a special place that we live in. And, you know, every day, people in Campfield, everywhere all over, everybody gets involved and barded with all these other outside things that I think shapes what we stay here, but, you know, I don't know if anybody heard on the stuff that, we're no longer calling it Christmas trees at the White House, now they're holiday trees. And, you know, I just, I think it's, to me personally, I just think it's, it's enough's enough. You can't have a red cup at Starbucks with an ornament on it, like people complain, or somebody's offended. I think we need this, not that we want to offend people, but I think we need to get some people maybe offended to come in here and start asking questions and finding these things out, because we're here to answer these questions and we're here to help the public. And I just, that's just, that's just, that's just my, I guess that's just my rant for today. It's just, I'm kind of frustrated with how society looks at certain things, and, again, I think the answers are there, it's just people don't want to see them, so, anyway, that's just my...
Here's my summation. I asked to have fifty people sit out there. Dottie, I think you want a hundred. Tell us what to do.
With that being said, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.